Hey, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to uh the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I'm your Chair, Dr. Kenneth Harris. Welcome to the last OBAFA meeting of the year. Would like to bring greetings to my colleagues as well as administration staff um and Board Office staff as well as our guests here tonight. Ms. Barton, do you mind reading the role for me, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Present.
Mrs. Madeline LaSalle Fraser. Dr. Juanita Miller.
Here.
Mr. David Murray.
Here.
Ms. Lolita E. Walker. We have Juan.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, all right, so we're gonna move on to uh adopt our meeting agenda. So may I have a motion to adopt the June fourteen twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded to adopt the June fourteen twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Uh, the agenda has been adopted. May I have a motion to approve the May seventeen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Have a second. Thank you. It's been properly seconded to adopt or to approve the May seventeen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Uh, the minutes have been approved. Thank you, colleagues. Moving on to public comment, we do not have public comment today for labor partners or public comment this evenings. That correct me if just a head nod is fine. Okay, so moving on to item three point one, our budget moment. I will now yield the floor to um Ms. Lisa Howell to give a brief overview of the expectations for the upcoming budget.
Dr. Harris, good evening, everyone. Um, so I wanted to just give a quick overview of where we are in the budget cycle. So if you go to page two or slide two, um, we've reviewed this slide before, but just wanted to kind of give an update um on where we are right now. Currently, as we've talked about before during this reconciliation, reconciliation cycle or the approved cycle, this is where we go through and we are reconciling the budget that has been approved by the county um that has now been transmitted back to the Board of Education. And we need to kind of reconcile the differences between what we requested versus what they have approved. Um, so want to kind of talk through some of the key aspects that we have gone through up until this point. Um, so first off, looking at staffing, we go through our school-based budgeting process in the spring. And so when we let met last time, we had not yet started that process, but we now have completed our school-based budgeting process. Um, and as you may recall, during that time, we go through and we finalize um our school-based budgeting based off of the funds that were allocated during the proposed cycle in total that were to be used towards schools. And now we actually go through and allocate those funds um to each of the individual schools using various factors, including obviously enrollment, projected enrollment for the coming year. Um, we also look at student achievement, classroom size for our early learners K through three and for our multilingual learners. Principals go through and they develop their staffing and their discretionary plans based off of the funds that were allocated to their schools. Then coming out of that school-based budgeting process, we use that to then finalize all the different position and staffing requests that will be needed for the coming year. In addition to that, we also look at our staffing for our central office positions, most of which were already reflected in the proposed budget. Um, but now we just go through during this reconciliation timeframe to finalize or update um costing for some of the positions for which we didn't have final numbers at that time. We go through this process now to sort of refine and update that information. The second thing that we look at during this reconciliation period is refreshing all of our uh projection data. So we do have, you know, more refined enrollment projection information that was used for school budgeting. Um, we also during this timeframe sometimes receive updates from MSD around our projected revenues. We have not yet, as of today, have not yet received our final approved transmitted revenue information from the state. Um, we're anticipating getting that before the board meeting. Right now, we're working with what, you know, has previously been uh requested and reflected. Um, we're not really expecting any changes, but we always like to have that final approved document to know that what we have reflected in our budget reflects what is intended for the state. Uh, and then also during this time during the reconciliation process, some of our grants now have gone through the application process. And now we have a better sense of how to actually load the money for the grants that aligns with the applications that are in the process of being submitted. So work on all those updates and we have worked on those updates during the months of May and even now going into early June. Um, as I mentioned earlier on, the county uh has approved our budget um that was submitted. So no changes have been made to what we requested. And in fact, it did added some additional funds in our budget, which we'll go through during the reconciliation process at the board meeting on June twenty-second that is specifically earmarked towards some of our um facility improvements. Um, so of course, in accordance with um the legislation and what's outlined in blueprint as I presented in the last, in one of the previous board meetings, the legislation is pretty clear on how much of the blueprint funding is required by the state versus what is required by the county. And so the county is required to fund us at that level and they have reflected that in the budget that has been approved. Um, so now that we have their approved budget, as I mentioned before, with all those various updates with the staffing on the school and the central office side and all the data refreshes, we're now trying to just reconcile and pull everything together. And that will be presented at the board meeting on June twenty-second. And at that meeting, we will, we will have a high-level um uh reconciliation or crosswalk to get us from the budget that was requested to the final budget that has been approved. Um, you'll see any changes in revenue. Um, and then you'll see any changes high level in some of the expenditures. And then, of course, we'll have the budget aligned by categories. And then also we will have final FTE um amount as well that will be reflected in the board action summary. So working through that now and again crossing our fingers that we get that final MSD document soon. So we can make sure we have that reflected in the information for next uh next week's meeting. And that is all that I have. I guess I kind of talked through this next slide as well, which kind of captures where we are in the calendar. So those last dates down below, the month of June, as I said, we're working through our final reconciliation. And then the meeting is next week on June twenty-second for our budget to be in effect July first twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you so much. So first of all, that's um, that's fantastic news. I'd say pending any additional documents that you are waiting on. But I do think that's good news, colleagues. I'm opening the floor up for questions if you do have questions for um Chief Howell. And uh I'll turn the floor up to anyone that might have a question.
Uh, I do, Madam.
Yep. Yep.
Um, Ms. Howell, are you able to tell us uh how much, how many funds in certain line items are not be, how can I put it? That will go back to the general fund because we have not used them. Can you give us a dollar amount?
We're still going through, we're in the very early stages of closing out the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, we close the books on June thirtieth or our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth and we'll continue to go through the process of making sure that all our purchase orders have been liquidated, making sure invoices have been paid, make sure accounting captures all the activities needed for twenty twenty-three. Um, so even though our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, it is a process to go through and actually close the books. It won't be until the end of the July, beginning of August, where we actually have gone through the process of closing our final books for twenty twenty-three. At that point in time, that's when we'll have a better sense once we get to August. Um, we'll have an August-September-ish timeframe, just depending on how the close goes. Where we actually know um how much additional funds may have been added to the fund balance, what that amount is at that point in time. We received a similar question from the county um earlier this week, actually. And so that's something that we're prepared to be able to share once we get through the year and close. But that'll be a few months away from now.
Okay, because that will be helpful when we start talking, uh planning the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget this year, later this year, correct? In terms of how, if we're sending money, I mean allocate in certain funds to certain line items and we're not using it. For instance, uh, I'll just throw this one out, substitute uh, we don't have substitute teachers, but I think we had substitute something in there from last year. And uh, we haven't had to hire any um substitutes for any, any reason. So that's money that goes back. So would we look at putting it back in uh or putting less in that fund and reallocating more money to another area? Um, that's my, that's my reason for asking for a total of what's gonna go back to the general fund.
Yeah, so we, we go through the process throughout the year and looking at where we expect there to be savings during the year. And if there's an opportunity to realign those funds to meet other um needs that have come up during the year. So you gave the example of substitutes, which is a great example. Um, so when we went through our, the last two financial reviews that we just completed, we presented to the board that we have vacancies in some of our positions. Transportation is a good example of that. Um, but that also then resulted in higher costs for overtime and for attempts and substitutes. And so even though we had a savings in our full-time for transportation workers, we then reallocated those funds to pay for the overtime. So it's not always gonna be a situation where the money doesn't go spent. It just may not be spent for the initial or the original intended purpose. So we'll realign the funds where it makes sense to be able to do so. Um, but inevitably, once we get through the year, even though we budget for positions to be filled for the entire year, obviously, there's gonna be vacancies, positions that don't get filled or positions that were filled where people left. And we, you know, we didn't anticipate there would be a vacancy. So inevitably, you're gonna have funds that will fall to the bottom line that won't fully be executed. And so once we have a sense of what that looks like at the end of the year, um, you know, want to know how much more may be contributed to the fund balance. But we do make some projections about that during the year. And we try to realign those funds where there is an opportunity to do that during the year. So we're not missing out on a chance to maybe take care of other initiatives, just having the money go unspent altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Dr. Miller. Um, and thank you for your presentation, uh, Ms. Howell. I think everyone's done with questions unless, Dr. Miller, you have another question or you okay?
I'm good.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, thanks, Ms. Howell. Um, all right, so moving on to three point two, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Michelle Winston, the Director of Internal Audits, to give us the third quarter internal audit report. The floor is yours, Ms. Winston.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Harris, and uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, my report um for on this meeting is covers the uh third quarter for third quarter period, which is uh January one uh twenty twenty-three through March thirty-first twenty twenty-three. Uh, next slide, please. So for that period, um, there were uh twenty um twenty total audit reports issued. Twelve of them were for Student Activity Fund audits, um, five were investigations, one was an operational audit, and then there were also two continuous auditing reviews. Um, for that period, also, there were one hundred thirty-three hotline reports received and reviewed. Um, the property technicians closed out uh twelve fixed asset inventories. And as a result of all of this, there were one point nine million dollars in assets that were subjected to audit. And we estimate approximately nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in losses were averted um as a result of that activity. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide um gives you um the details for the uh twelve Student Activity Fund audits that were um conducted. Um, the um, the audit period, which represents the scope of the audit, um, the total number of findings, and then how many of those findings were actually repeated findings from the uh prior audit. All of these uh audit reports, um, the complete um details of the audits can be found on internal audits website. And um you have uh the link um there, um, if you'd like to go and uh read those reports. So this next slide is uh giving you more information about our hotline reporting. Um, one hundred and thirty-three reports received for the quarter and then four hundred and eight uh YTD um year-to-date, that's for the period July one um twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first twenty twenty-three. And uh you'll uh, the first column gives you um the broad category for, for the hotlines. Um, the, the next column is uh the year-to-date count. And then the final is the uh third quarter count. Uh, parent and community relations has the highest count and these are mostly calls that we receive from, from the general community uh and parents. And uh it just is a, just a variety um of uh of concerns, whether it's about their own um student or um some other activity at the schools. Uh, next slide, please. So investigation reports completed, the first one was the Bowie High School international travel. Um, the um allegations here were substantiated um that there was an international trip organized for Bowie High School uh staffs and students and communities that was not properly administered in accordance with uh the uh PG CPS field trip procedures. Uh, this um investigation was requested by the Associate Superintendent of High Schools and Alternative Schools. And uh, you know, here, the uh, the, the staff member had uh, because the parents were paying on the travel agent uh agency directly, did not um uh understand that you also had to go through the appropriate process for approval. So that's the reason why this was uh substantiated. Um, so we're at, so high school twenty twenty-one, twenty-two yearbook funds. Um, we substantiated um that um there were yearbook funds collected by a staff member. Um, and in fact, the funds were considered to be mismanaged uh because uh the funds were collected but, but not remitted to um the school. Um, now with elementary school leave violation, these allegations were not substantiated um that a teacher had not um submitted for uh approval for three weeks of leave. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the Blatonsburg High School grading practices investigation, um, the allegations were partially substantiated. Um, there were concerns um reported by an anonymous hotline caller um that the principal had requested during any staff instructional meeting that teachers grade assignments, um, whether the um students had uh excused absences or not on that the, the teacher reportedly had called it an amnesty week um in order to help students pass the first quarter. Um, we could not confirm that um that communication actually had occurred during the staff instructional meeting. And we did find that none of the teachers that uh that attended that meeting had actually um recorded grades for students with unlawful absences. But we did find two others um students for other teachers um where they um received grades for unlawful absences. Um, the principal did provide an action plan response um, um, not concurring um with the uh fi- our findings, um noting that um uh students' absence from school for excused and disciplinary reasons are eligible to make up missed assignments that occurred during their absences. Uh, next. Uh, Charles Flowers High School Conflict of Interest and Cash Handling Investigation. Um, this, uh, we received several hotline allegations regarding uh the daily operations at Charles Flowers High School. Um, the allegations included on grade discrepancies, um preferential treatment of teachers, administration conflicts and sale of homecoming dance tickets. Um, we partially substantiated um the specific allegations and some of our key determinations were um that um there was a teacher that was performing tasks other than providing instruction. However, um, this teacher did have the principal's permission to do so. Um, and part of those responsibilities included um, um students scheduling of classes. Um, some students, uh, we found that there were some school students enrolled in English nine for the first semester and English ten for the second semester during the same year. Um, there were coaches that um that were hired that did not uh educate um, um students. However, they did support students. Uh, class sizes were not uh equitable in some places, click cases where teachers, some teachers had a heavier load than others, if you will. And uh those teachers that did not have full classes uh were assigned other duties that supported students. Um, we did find that the tickets to the homecoming dance were sold at a higher price at the door and the claims of staff preferential treatment were investigated as a personnel matter. Oh. Okay, and so that concludes our investigation. The um operational audit that was issued was the Treasury Operations Audit. And this was an operational audit of the Treasury uh Operations Off- Office that we conducted um pursuant to the uh FY twenty-three article. And uh, we reviewed and evaluated processing of daily cash activities, cash management journal entries and compliance with the investment policy and lease purchase process as well as the reimbursement and, and, and reporting and uh vendor ACH setup. Uh, my findings here, there were four um delinquent processing of daily cash haven- a- activities reporting cash management journals. Um, uh, the management's response was a concurrent and with a um implementation date for corrective action of April one. Um, the second finding was non-compliance with the investment policy requirements. Um, management also concurrent with this finding um and had the same implementation date of April one. Uh, non-compliance with established eight vendor ACH requests and authorization setup guidelines. Um, partially con- partial concurrence on this finding. Uh, uh, implementation date also April one. And then finally, insufficient administrative policies and standard operating procedures. Um, uh, required for Treasury Operations process. Uh, management did concur with this and also indicated implementation date of an ongoing um date beginning July one. Uh, continuous auditing reviews and continuous auditing reviews pretty much um represents mainly data analytics that um that we perform and that uh we will um, we will gather the data, um, do some analytics. We don't, we don't perform audits of this data, but we do share it um with management uh with the hopes that they will review and um possibly um see some opportunities to um mitigate, mitigate any um potential internal control weaknesses or anything else that they deem necessary. Um, so the first one was the school activity funds um that we uh conducted for the period October eighth twenty twenty-one through July one twenty twenty-two. And the second one was grade changes uh for the uh fourth quarter. Um, and uh included in those were on the summary of grade changes by school, um, delinquent grade changes, approved grade changes, high school grade changes of forty points or more and grade changes that resulted in fail to pass status. Um, these are our property results of our property inventories. Um, uh, the uh total, um, these are um electronic assets. So these are Chromebooks, um, tablets, um, um, just electronic devices in general. And uh so um those are the locations that we uh provided the inventories for. Um, the total finalized unlocated items, um, the cost and depreciation value. And what we're doing here is we're performing a, a, a physical inventory and then comparing the results to the asset management system. And so these were our planned um audits that we um wanted to complete for this quarter and the percentage of completion. Um, the data analytics, HR and payroll reconciliation is on seventy-five percent complete. We expect to complete that on this co- this quarter. A sure ID management software solution that audit has been completed and issued also this fourth quarter. MSD student enrollment audit support, the MSD auditors completed their audit. We don't have their report yet, but we did um support them um with uh the student enrollment portion. So that's one hundred percent completed. Uh, high school cheerleading, that was a special request audit also. Um, we completed that and issued a report in fourth quarter. Um, virtue HR management software IT audit is sixty percent completed. We, but we expect to also be um finished this quarter. Uh, the Human Resources Certification Office, um, we began that audit, but then it was uh suspended doing uh because of the uh electronic, um, they're um, they're scanning all of the personnel files. Um, but lab practices follow-up, uh, we're in the very um, uh, early stages. That is a follow-up of a two thousand eighteen audit where we will assess the status of a remediation of the audit findings. And that um completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Winston, for your report. One question for me, do you have, um, I know you said you expect to complete and report on some in the fourth quarter. Do you have projections for other audits that will follow after the ones that are at a hundred percent already?
Um, you, do you mean uh projections as far as uh what's?
So, sorry, let me rephrase. Do you have a projection for other audits that you will do following the fourth quarter? Like, have you projected what those will be?
Uh, yes, and, and I usually, in, in my own quarter, so this is my third quarter report. So in the third quarter report, I will always say, oh, these are the audits that we expect to um complete in the fourth quarter. In my fourth quarter report, there's also a section that will say, oh, these are the, the, the audits we'll complete. So um that would be in my fourth quarter report.
You got it, okay. Thank you. Uh, other questions from other board members before I let Ms. Winston go? Okay, looks like we're good to go. Thank you, Ms. Winston, for your time. Uh, before we move on to, before we move on to three point three, I want to say hello to Vice Chair Walker. Thanks for joining us tonight as well as Board Member Breath, because he's also joined. Um, so moving on to three point three, uh, Operations Moment for Capital Improvement Programs. Updates, I'll yield the floor to Dr. Coleman. Uh, and hello to Chair Mickens Murray as well. I'll yield the floor to uh Dr. Coleman, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you so much, uh, Board Committee Chair, Dr. Harris and Board Members. Good afternoon. Uh, we are grateful for the opportunity during the Operations Moment to provide an update on the Capital Improvement Program. The CIP is an annual six-year spending plan that must be submitted to the Board of Education for approval by September of each year. In addition, a public hearing must occur prior to Board of Education approval of the CIP. So June is an opportune time to reintroduce the CIP along with its connection to the Educational Facility, Facilities Master Plan. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to the Capital Programs Director, Mr. Matt Locke, to go into detail.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm gonna try and give you a, a general overview of the overall process by which we go to develop both our EFMP and then how that feeds into our CIP. So if you uh advance to the next uh, the, uh, the next one, thank you. There, slide three, thank you. So as you can see, at the base is the Educational Facilities Master Plan that's developed by the Department of Capital Programs. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is developed by the uh Department of Building Services. Together, we work on uh developing a budget um and a plan for capital improvement. And then that results in the top of the pyramid, which is the number of projects which we put out every year. Uh, next slide, please. So as you can see, this is our annual timeline. There's no rest for the weary as soon as we're, we're, before we even finish getting approval on our, our, our our twenty-four CIP, we've already started working on our twenty-five CIP. Uh, that will be due, uh, we'll have that for the meeting in August. So you can see there that the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which was just approved. Uh, thank you very much for all that. And then we have the capital budget, which will be submitted in, in August, at our August. And then uh it will then go on to the County Council um and then to the IEC. And then they will implement um, uh, they will approve our budgets, uh, which they just did uh, uh, this past month. So next slide, please. So the annual EFMP, it, it's, it's intended to uh, to, to take all the things that, that are going on um, you know, in, in, in the system, in, outside the um, you know, in 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 the system, in outside the system. Um, and sort of uh put that into a plan that sort of is is forward looking for for several years, twenty years. Um, at 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 the minimum. Um, and that then feeds down into, which is basically a five-year CIP. And some of the things that we have to consider is new legislation, as as you see here, the Build to Learn Act uh and uh the Blueprint for Early Future Act. Uh, um, some of the changes that were made, uh, chapter six oh eight, two oh one, which is House Bill six oh three. And then your own climate act change action plan, which was also adopted by the County Council. Uh, next slide, please. So our general vision, as you can see here, uh, is to take all these items and sort of coalesce them into a plan. Um, and so our primary thing is to bring schools into a a good state of repair. Uh, we want to provide a a safe and secure educational space. We want to address the deficiencies that we're seeing out there. Uh, we want to align our facility with our supports, the twenty-first century learning environment. We want insured at schools or well utilized and sized correctly. And then align our project schedules with a realistic expectation for state and county funding. And I need to emphasize that we don't usually, we no longer really ask for every penny that we need. We ask for the amount of money that we think we can actually obtain. Uh, so that is aligned properly um and um so that we don't have to have uh O N B or anybody else trying to guess where the cut should be made. Uh, next slide, please. So some of the things that go into uh our uh our our decision-making are enrollment trends. Um, as you can see, uh, we have a projection, see enrollment increase um by three thousand students over the next three years. Um, and um and despite the fact we had the dip in uh in in enrollment during COVID, that dip is slowly being erased. Uh, next slide, please. So a lot of our uh our our cycle one projects are 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 targeted at resolving overcrowding. As you may know, uh, we we uh almost every school in the north, uh, elementary school in the north have been overcrowded. Um, and the high schools are overcrowded and the middle schools. Now, the middle schools have now relieved some of that overcrowding in the elementary schools. I'm going to go with sixth graders in the middle schools, the new middle schools that are coming online are bigger. So they're gonna absorb some more of that population. Um, but we're still gonna have issues. And so we're uh, as you know, we're gonna be working on uh on on elementary schools and also uh in and working on the high schools in the north, uh, which right now um uh will involve both uh the construction of a a new uh Delphi area high school and a new High Point High School or modernization of High Point High School. And so those will be coming along and 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 they will reduce uh um what will which is soon to be about thirty-six hundred student deficit in north, uh, which is what we're projecting uh for high school students. Um, next slide, please. So the way in which we we're trying to execute this is, as you, I've I've talked about before, we have a three-legged stool, which is traditional construction, P three construction and renovations. Um, and um, a lot of that, we're focusing on uh modernizations. Uh, we prioritizing cycle one, that's the where we're at right now. There are roughly about the about thirty-seven projects that were in there. Um, and um, we're making changes or adjusting app based on structural analysis results and things like that. So some schools that might have been waiting a little longer have now been moved up because of our recent structural analysis. There's a uh uh in the EFMP, there's a a section that discusses that. Uh, we ended up finding that there were two active schools that were in bad enough condition that we needed to close them. Those are Templeton and Woodmore, uh, Templeton, we we built where it is. And Woodmore is gonna be rebuilt at Fairwood, and I'll talk about them a little later. Um, so and then what we're trying to do is um, we're trying to also reassess for the next set of cycles. So we're going to be doing another assessment of all those cycle two and cycle three schools that are not in play already. Next slide, please. So um also part of of addressing some of the overcrowding issues was the Comprehensive Boundaries Initiative, which was started in twenty twenty. Um, and um, going to the next slide. Um, the result of that has been that uh we are um, it it's starting to to be implemented. It was implemented uh the fall of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the attendance areas for the new and expanded middle schools and balance enrollment for nineteen elementary schools are are were the initial results, in which are realigned all the sixth graders in the middle schools. In addition, uh, six elementary schools will be consolidated over the next several years. Some of them will be built to the P three. And these plans represent the most comprehensive changes that we've seen in grade structures since two thousand nine. So it's a big, big change. So um part of also, besides the the uh, the 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 construction plan, rebounding, having to make adjustments based upon um uh to our strategic funding initiative. So we're still focusing most of our county-based funding on on systematic systemic projects and maintenance projects from uh the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. But our stage renovations, we're gonna ask for some funding from the state because even though we originally wanted to focus all that on county funding. Um. Issues with uh some of our larger projects, Sutland being the primary one, has caused us to have to delay some of our projects and reassess our funding strategy. So we're gonna ask for some state money on four of our six um stage renovations in in cycle one um that will allow us to better use our money. We're still trying to keep the overall cost of the stage renovations somewhere in that twenty to twenty-five to thirty million dollar range annually once they get started and but we're we're ready, we'll be ready to go. There, we're still um uh moving their planning and design through permits, but we are gonna delay the construction a little bit. Um, and with the alternative construction uh financing or P three or blueprint, how you want to call it, we had to increase the number of schools because of legislation change. So instead of doing twelve schools, we'll now be doing fourteen schools total. Sick, um, and 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 we're, we got extra money to do that, not a tremendous amount of extra money, but we did get some. And again, we're also working as hard as we can to reduce the overall uh construction costs, mostly through um reduction in scope. And uh, we're trying to make the buildings a little smaller um and trying to be a little bit more um concise about what we're doing. Next slide, please. So the traditionally funded projects that we've been doing are that we have in construction, our Sutland High School, uh, modernization Cherokee Lane Elementary School, William Work, uh, New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, uh, Andrew Jackson Middle School, uh, Stephen Decatur Middle School, Robert Goddard Montessori HVAC upgrade, and then Chilum Elementary School Pod Conversion. Next slide, please. And then the ones that are in design are the New Northern Area High School, High Point High School, uh, modernization, William Schmidt Outdoor Center, Full Springs uh renovation, uh, Madison, James Madison um middle school HVAC upgrade and the Mont- elementary school HVAC upgrade. Um, next slide, please. So the blueprint projects, uh, these are the first six and 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 phase ones. It's a Delphi Area Middle School, Walker Mill Middle School, Kenmore Middle School, Drew Freeman, Heightsville and Potomac, K through eight. Um, next slide, please. Could you go, uh, could you go back? Um, I'm sorry, go forward again, two two slides up. I I misplaced the slide, one more slide. There we go. Um, and the eight new ones that we're gonna be working on are gonna be Margaret Brent Elementary School Replacement, which is gonna be help us with the with the closing of of New Glen Ridge. I mean, of Glen Ridge Elementary School. Templeton Elementary School Placement, as we discussed before, that building is determined to be unsuitable for for occupa- occupancy. And so we're gonna be tearing that down and replacing it. Ro- New Roberts Frost Area K through eight, New Brandywine Area K through eight, uh, New Fairwood Elementary School, which will replace the uh Woodmore Elementary School. Um, Silver Lake Elementary School uh replacement, Silver Hill Lake, I'm sorry. Uh, James Duckworth Elementary School Replacement, and then Heightsville Elementary School Replacement. Uh, right now, um, so if you go back to the previous slide.
And that and that's Spring Hill Lake, Spring Hill Lake.
Spring Hill Lake, I'm sorry. Did you go back? Yeah, so where we are with the traditional projects is that the New Cherokee Lane uh opened in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Renovations at Robert Goddard, uh, Montessori, uh, Chilum Elementary School and Andrew Jackson were completed in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Stephen Decatur project completion, which is was is fall twenty twenty-three. Uh, New Glen Ridge Area Middle School and William Work Middle School will open in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And Sutland High School will place some project right now slated to open in the fall of twenty twenty-seven. We completed in the fall of twenty twenty-seven. There'll be a phase construction and we'll we'll have the academic sections built before some of the other ones. So it'll be a a rolling, a rolling opening. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide. So of the uh updated the of the blueprint schools, five of the six in that first list will be opening this summer, uh, this August. Um, and then the sixth school will open in November twenty twenty-three. Um, PGS was PGCTS, uh, right now has about eight hundred and ten um million dollars over thirty years slated from the the state uh for the second tranche, um, which uh we are working on. They required us to build eight schools, which is two more than we had anticipated. So we had to make some adjustments and we're in the middle of doing that. Uh, but the procurement is underway for the second set of blueprints projects. Uh, we've selected down to three developing groups. And uh and uh right now, uh, we we are required to close that transaction and move and start with construction by July twenty twenty-four. So we are well into that right now, and we expect us um hopefully to make a selection uh in sometime around Labor Day. Next slide. So um, this is kind of what capital programs did with the the numbers that we have before. So as you can see, we had forty-two projects that were finished and are occupied. We had sixty-eight projects that were closed out. Uh, we had twenty-nine, a hundred twenty-nine projects with capital funds are that are in construction uh this past summer. Uh, and then we had six projects that received design award from the state. Next slide, please. Um, we had over a hundred and thirty-two awards made for design or construction services this year. A hundred and forty-eight million dollars were spent in FY twenty-two. Um, over this year, we're tracking somewhere around a hundred and forty million right now. Uh, over, we had in FY twenty-two, which is the only complete year I have right now, um, uh, over six, we had over sixty change orders. Um, and of that, twelve percent of those change orders uh were due to agency mandates. Those were things where we've had changes in the building code that required us to make some changes by D P D PI, WSSC, um, and DOE. Um, of of twenty seven point forty, twenty, oh, twenty-eight percent, basically, of our change orders were due to unforeseen or poor conditions in the existing buildings. This is when you open up a wall and you find something that you didn't expect to see. Um, a lot, some of the 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 building plans, some of the documents that we had um uh showing uh water lines and things were not accurate. Um, and so when we opened up, we had to make some changes there. We had um, uh, we were actually under the industry average. We had, we had, uh, we had three percent of our our total change orders to our project budgets. Most of the industry averages around four percent. Um, and of the twenty, uh, twenty-six percent are roughly quarter of our change orders with credits back to us where we got money back um and uh on the project. Next slide, please. So this is sort of a breakdown by the numbers and the types of projects that we had. As you can see, the lion's share systematic upgrades. Um, and then there's uh building repairs, and then you've got your your code corrections. And these are a lot of our county-funded projects um that we have going. Those are uh, and you can see modernizations, though taking up a large share of money doesn't take up the largest share of our project mix. Next, next slide. So once we get finished with cycle one, we'll be on to cycle two and three. We're planning to do an assessment right now. Um, we just did the structural assessment, and now we're getting ready to do uh uh cycle two and cycle three assessment. They're gonna focus on all the buildings in those section, those sections. And we're gonna go uh look at them to see if we need to reprioritize uh any of the construction uh or um uh order in those two cycles, because some of the ones in cycle three may have deteriorated faster than we thought, and we might need to move to cycle two, and some in cycle two may have did, you know, maybe better off and moved down. And so we're gonna make some adjustments. Uh, next slide, please. So um, there is gonna impact through the funding. Um, and uh as you know, uh, we famously talked about how we need to spend eight point five billion dollars over twenty years in order to achieve our goals. Um, that was based on a um uh roughly about a four hundred and twenty-five million dollar spend annually. That has not been the case. We're, there was an increase in spending average from around one hundred and thirty million dollars to roughly a hundred and seventy-three million dollars from uh two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. So that's been a a significant increase. There's no one's uh, but it it hasn't been enough. Uh, we've done some things to the P three, um, you know, to to shift some of the spending uh so that we could get more in. But even with all that, we're at, right now, we are at fifteen schools we completed uh of the thirty-seven in cycle one at the close of twenty twenty-three, which leaves us a lot of schools to do. Now, we've got a lot that are in process, um, but it's still, we won't finish cycle one until twenty twenty-nine. And so that's made us worse, us to make some adjustments. Um, and um, there have some been some cycle two schools through consolidation, but it accelerated into cycle one, but really not that many. Um, next slide, please. So, um. Next slide, please. So when we rewrote the EFMP, um, we pointed out some things that need to be noted. One of the things that we did, uh, and it's the most major thing that we did is we changed the cycle timeframe from six years to ten. Uh, as it looks right now, the the first cycle probably won't be done for twelve years, but we're gonna average it out around roughly ten years, because that seems how long it's gonna take us to do them based on the current funding trends. Um, and that has had an impact on the overall through the uh through escalation and the timeframe. It's it's gonna change the overall um impact of of what we're doing. The bottom line is that instead of eight point five billion over twenty years as a need, it's roughly about twenty billion over forty years is what the actual need is gonna be, gonna look at. And so it's something that that we need to bear in mind. Um, I know we're doing everything we can do to try to speed up construction and to and to get projects moving and change project mixes. But we're still, we're falling behind, even with the expense and the new things. We're we're not, we're we're just behind, we're falling behind based on uh on on the lack of funding. Um, and and that pretty much, uh, next slide, that pretty much concludes my presentation. Uh, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock, for your presentation. Um, keep that up for me, me, I mean, this, pardon, I think we'll have a few questions. I'll I'll start things off. Um, slide eighteen, Mr. Matlock, you could provide some clarification. You said that we've got our deadline set for July first of next year, right? And you're preparing to, are you, what what you're projecting the decision by Labor Day?
So what what we're gonna end up doing is, so it's, this is two phases. So the close, which is what's required by the by the by the legislature and the selection are two different things. So we'll select the preferred vendor uh in September. Um, and then, once the preferred vendor is selected, they will go into what's called an E and A or an exclusive negotiation period, right? Uh, and that that period will will give them the opportunity to complete design so that they can confirm their final budget number and all the financing necessary to do what they need to do. And so we will work alongside with them. The last time we did what was a hard money uh uh deal, this one's more of a progressive arrangement where we'll sit alongside them and look at the numbers as they're coming in and request adjustments so that we can make sure that we get to the affordability number that we want. That's gonna require them to do more design um than it during that period. And so that's why the period from September to July is the timeframe that we're looking at. Our our deadline is July one, twenty twenty-four. We're hoping to be closed well before that, but we need to to give them time to do that, that work and for us to sort of work as a partnership to get to those numbers.
Got it, thank you. Um, my next question is from slide twenty. Um, you mentioned that we, as we're going through the budget, we're looking back on um, our figures, it's about twenty-seven point five, so across twenty-seven and a half percent of the change orders came from unforeseen or poor conditions in the existing uh buildings. When we, when we go through the process of uh the proposals and things like that, do we? What's the typical margin that we have for for situations like that? Is is twenty-seven and a half close to what we project, or is it overly projected?
Well, if you look at the average contingency that you see on a project, it's somewhere around three percent, right? Um, we had a lot of change, we had, this is a percentage of the sixty. So if you're looking at your roughly about fifteen change orders occurred uh because of uh poor conditions. And I'll give you exact example what what happened. Um, there's, these buildings are very old, things have happened, sometimes they're undocumented. So best example I can give you is gonna be uh Montessori, uh, Robert Goddard Montessori, Montessori. We were gonna hook up a new sprinkler system, which we did. But when we went to hook up the new main, which was required for the sink sprinkler system, it turned out the main had, the the whole water line had been replaced, but there was no documentation, and it was a a different sized pipe. It was using different sized materials. That required us to bring in uh a a a new vault to be created. We had to do a whole lot of extra stuff with WSSC, which they picked up some of it. But it also had to spring more consultants, it delayed the project. Um, it it had all those kinds of downstream impacts. And that's the kind of thing that you run into on some of these projects and these buildings where they're old. There's been a lot of different administrations, people have done things at the place, they haven't documented them. And uh you run into things and, you know, or you'll run into. You know, or you'll run into a a ceiling where you thought you had a over, you could get all the way over the ceiling. You found out you had a hard ceiling and then you had to bait that ceiling. So there are things like that that we've run into and those are, we usually budget roughly around uh, you know, somewhere between three and five percent for contingencies like that. Um in in the overall budget and that usually holds up.
Okay, so yeah, I I understand um what you're saying because even with those change orders, it doesn't say how major or minor. Um the percentage of that's twenty seven point five is, and I understand things happen that cause schedule slippage. And specifically in these situations, I can see that most of these programs, almost these projects aren't exactly um uh. Schedule driven, I'd say, in terms of kind of our schedules are kind of fluid. Um when it comes to some of these things, so I I definitely understand things like that. I just wanted to know, you know, what was the contingency that we built in? So it's not, it's not, we build in three percent, but just the fact that it's twenty seven point five doesn't mean it's nine times that amount, it's three percent of the the total. So I'm just explaining for the general, the general public there because I I know three is way off of twenty seven and a half. Anyway, um colleagues, um any additional questions? That was it for me. Thank you, Mr. Matlock. Okay, I saw a handle up. We'll go to Chair Mickens Murray and then we'll go to Board Member Briggs in that order. So when she's done, you can proceed, Mr. Briggs.
Oh, thank, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Matlock, help me to understand and maybe I'm confused because I was a little late getting on to the call. Uh when you request funding, did I understand you to say that you don't request what we need? And you request, okay, explain that to me, please.
Okay.
That makes no sense to me, so I'll say that to you.
So so let me tell you what we used to do. What we used to do is what I would call a political budget. Where we would li- list every need that we possibly could spend, everything that we could possibly need. And we threw it all to one big budget and then we would submit it to the to O N B. We never get a hundred percent and of what we asked for, but in these cases, we weren't even getting anything close, it was still more like twenty five percent. But the problem with that twenty five percent was that O N B was deciding where to cut, right? Now, there's two problems with that. One, it's bad budget management from our standpoint. Because it's not clearly identifying what we really think we need to spend or or creating any sort of realistic uh avenue about what what's going to be available to us. We get a forecast from uh the Department of O N B of exactly how much money they have available to bond. That's the only, the maximum amount of money they actually have available for us. They might be able to squeeze a little extra, maybe ten or fifteen million dollars, but for the most part, that 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 forecast tells you. The the sort of the line that they they can't cross in order to keep their triple A bond rating. So it, that's where it is. So that line might be one year a hundred and thirty million dollars, it might be a hundred and fifty million dollars, it might be a hundred and sixty, it might be a hundred and twenty. Depending on that bonding year, right? So we know that going in. I know how much money they have available that they can give to us. We have a budget that's based on that item, based on how many projects we can get, based on that budget, plus the additional money that we get from the state and potentially any grants that we might get. Right? So we base our C I P based on those 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 numbers. That's how we we're trying to make a realistic budget. That maximizes out what we can get from the state, maximizes out what we can get from the county and maximizes out what we can get from grant funding. And we put that all into a budget. Now, the thing is, I need more money for all the things that we need to do. Obviously, we need more money. But we're not asking for more money because we know it's not available to us. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we're we're putting the money where we need it the most. And where we believe that uh so that we don't have O N B deciding which projects are the most important projects for us or the least important projects, that we're doing that. And therefore, they're not making cuts for us. We're making adjustments based upon that maximum available budget.
Okay, I appreciate uh what you have just shared, but let me say this to you. What I would rather see is that we are projecting based on the work that we believe that we can accomplish. In whatever that time span is for that fiscal year. And then you can have another list that if you had the dollars, you would do A, B, C, one, two, three. What I hear you saying is that you limit what you ask for and then you come back to the board and say. But we couldn't do this because we didn't have the money. See, to me, that's that's not a good argument to bring to the board. The argument that I would like to see is, board, we can do this amount of work. And it's based on these dollars. Now, the next list is if we had additional dollars, because these board members can go and advocate to get you some more money from someplace. I don't know where that is right now, but I am just saying, let us know what your needs are. We need to know what they are. Okay? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Oh, sorry, my light went out. This is part of our, it's one of our plan trying to preserve money, so the lights go on and off if there's no movement. So uh I I appreciate what you're saying. Uh as I said before, we've just been trying to manage the budget as we as we, it's been presented to us. Um and we're trying to to be good stewards of the funds that we do have. Um and I I I certainly can ask for more money. I I just would like to make sure that our priorities are adhered to. And the way the the projects are broken up and the way the budgets are submitted to the I C um with that, the 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 bigger the request. Um uh that, you know, that's always. Match outdoor efficiency, but we'll see what we can do about trying to at least articulate the need better.
Uh exactly. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. I think I'm I'm next here. Um so thanks so much, Mr. Matlock, for your presentation and um, you know, was actually happy to see that we were having a discussion about this. I might have missed it before. Actually, I did miss it on the thirty, um thirtieth to thirty first of May. Um I just had a question about two pieces. So for this slide where it says that we're receiving the about nine hundred K credited back to the um school, school, school district. Do those double all over to the next year? Like if we, you know, if we are able to kind of draw back those close to a million, is that going to be able to be utilized for the next budget or is that um?
That done? Um my understanding is that uh so basically um the money is not money that, it's money that we don't spend, right? So we usually realign that money to another need, right? So um as long as it's within a in a budget category, we can realign that to either do another project or um something like that. So that's usually what we end up doing. It usually gets realigned. So if I have uh uh, you know, if I have an HVAC project where I've gotten some money returned on it, I may take that money that I have and apply it. So I can do another project or move something else forward. Um that's kind of how we use it. So the the answer, short answer to your question is yes. It sort of rolls over, but usually we try to use it for it does.
Uh okay, great. So that's, there there are potentially additional dollars that can be utilized to cover, sounds like some of these um change orders.
Yeah, they're mostly, yeah, they're mostly, we mostly use the money. The change orders are usually covered by the contingency in our budgets. So there's always a a user conti- uh owner contingency and a uh uh developer or construction contingency. And usually we can, we can resolve a change order through those contingencies. Um if we can't, then we might realign some additional money to handle that, to make up the difference. Um a lot of times, though, the um realignment are used for unexpected projects.
Okay, great. And then I had a question about the last slide of this presentation. So, yeah, here, so um I read through some of the FY twenty four uh educational facility master plan and I, in in a lot of that made sense. And I think some of it, what I read was that inflation is a a part of the problem around why costs have gone up the way they have in addition to just. As you said, additional kind of cost in the construction in the building and things that are unforeseen, et cetera, et cetera. I was just curious, with the contracts that we have with the with the contractors. Um and as far as pay goes, I'm thinking about inflation, so I'm assuming that impacts the pay, then impacts the products that we're buying from them, right? Whatever services, i- is there the potential for if, as you know, things get better? Um is there the potential for us saving dollars and being able to kind of lessen the amount that we'll probably likely have to spend over the next forty years?
Um. Nothing is ever iron and stone, so let me just say that. Um and money's kind of fluid, right? Right now, what we saw was that as as you described, we had that hockey stick uh of inflation that occurred during COVID. That was the result of a lot of things, uh decreased in production, um you know. Increased uh pay, a lot of things happened during that period of time and uh the numbers went up dramatically. So like steel and glass tripled and things like that. Those prices aren't going to drop dramatically anytime soon, okay? Uh but they, I, we're hoping there's, they've actually stabilized and we're hoping that eventually they'll come down a little bit. Um we're expecting that to happen. Um and um, you know, labor has, it also went up significantly, went up like roughly one year, went up twelve percent. So that was a significant increase in in cost and in and 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 y'all may not realize this now, uh but um. We pay prevailing wage on all, all of our projects. And prevailing wage is indexed by um jurisdiction, by locale. So uh if if you're comparing apples to apples, um you can't in a lot of cases. Because uh the prevailing wage in Baltimore City or the prevailing wage in in another county could be significantly lower than the prevailing wage in in Prince George's County. In fact, we're one of the higher jurisdictions based on locale, S D C, Montgomery County. This area is a very expensive area for labor. And as a result, we spend a lot more per hour on those things. If if those things start to stabilize out, um then yes, you can see some savings. If we can, if we can uh jumpstart and accelerate construction, continue to accelerate construction, we might be able to reduce the overall number of years. That we have to spend for the construction, which would reduce the overall price. This is based on, this, these numbers are based on this sort of escalation stacking on each other, right? So if you spend, you know, uh a dollar today, you'll spend a dollar seven next year, you spend a dollar fourteen. Or, you know, as it goes on the next year and so it sort of builds on itself. If there's, if if it gets to the point where maybe the market stabilizes and it doesn't build or inflation drops a little bit, uh we might see some some of the pricing come down. And if we can accelerate, keep trying to accelerate construction or change some methodologies in order to do that. Uh or reduce the number of schools we replace. So one of the things that we're trying to do, um just so uh everybody's clear, we we mentioned consolidation in 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 there. And if we can, if if I have twenty schools that I need to to replace and I can replace twenty schools by only building ten. Um that will reduce the overall cost of construction significantly. That'll be the biggest factor. And then and right now, we're trying to do that. We're trying to consolidate, you know, as many schools that they're like. Um and uh from big schools to small schools, I'm not replacing all the schools in with one to one, I'm replacing them one to two, I mean, two to one or three to one in case of K through eights.
Great. And then the last question is, um so around negotiations with the contractor. So I know that, you know, when you think about buying a home and you're picking the granite countertop versus, you know, maybe a cheaper option. Is there, is that happening within any of these contracts? Are we negotiating, you know, cheaper um materials versus uh?
Well, well, there's a balance. So we do value engineer uh where uh where it's it's reasonable. We're not always, we're not going Cadillac finishes uh on everything. Uh but there's some things uh that pay for themselves over time if you use uh better material. So, you know, uh so it's a balance. Um we're not going with the cheapest item for everything. In fact, there's some systems that we don't even allow them to install. And the reason why we don't allow them to use certain certain systems that might be considered cheaper is because they don't work well. Um so you don't want a building to be cold uh in the wintertime, you don't want it to be overly hot in the summertime, in the in the spring and summer. Uh we need to make sure those systems work well. So a lot of cases, we will use, uh we'll ask or or require them to use systems that we know are reliable. Um and they may not be the cheapest version. On the other end of the spectrum, we might go with a a different type of flooring material uh in the classrooms and a more heavy duty flooring in the hallways. And we try to balance it out like that. So yes, do try to reduce some, but we don't want to reduce it to the point that we're building buildings that won't hold up over time.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Briggs. Thank you, Chair Mickens Murray, for your questions. Um I don't see any other hands up, so I'm going to let you off the stage, Mr. Matlock. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to uh facilities and Dr. Coleman as well. All right, colleagues, so moving on to uh item four, we don't have any follow ups from our previous meeting. And moving on to our next steps, this is our last OBAHA meeting of the year. So I want to say thank you all so much for sticking with us throughout it. Thank you for the conversation and the discussion. Um the the understanding and changes that were made throughout this process, hope to get even better next year. Thank you to um staff, thank you to Ms. Howe and Dr. Coleman and again, Mr. Matlock, as well as uh Ms. Winston and Ms. Barney for, again, hanging with us this entire time. Um looking forward to even bigger and better things next year. And thank you to my colleagues, um uh Dr. Miller, Board Member Murray, as well as uh Vice Chair Leader Walker for, again, being a part of this committee. And then my guest, um Mr. Mr. Briggs, Board Member Briggs and Chair Mickens Murray, thank you so much for joining us tonight. And we look forward to you joining again next year for even bigger and better things, colleagues. So um I guess we'll we'll end there for closing remarks unless anyone else has anything.
Board Member Harris, can I say something?
Yes, go for it, Dr. Miller.
I just want to thank you for your leadership this year. Um you have really demonstrated. Um you have demonstrated leadership, guidance and knowledge of our um committee assignment. And I really appreciate uh the work you have put into it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. All right, colleagues, uh with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn for the night.
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you. Tomorrow, you'll see us tomorrow.
See you tomorrow, colleagues. See you. Have a good night. See you. Thanks, Mia.
No problem at all. It's been a great year.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Um I don't think I've got it. I know it's a recording, I'm just going to hit play, pause or stop.